Okay. Let me. How do I mute? Oh, boy, I'm driving. Did you mute me? Mute me?
She's driving?
Yes. Or perhaps pulling over. Who knows? I will just note for the record that it is 7:21 PM. We've just gotten our room. It is June 28th of 2022.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lenny Tubbs. I'm the appeals acting chair this evening. As indicated in the agenda for this meeting, this is an in-person with remote access by Zoom video teleconference conference. Remote meeting access is provided posted on the town website for the commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate. For those listening, I would like to ask you to mute your device or phone if you are able so that so that we do not get any background movies. When it's time for individual speak, I'll ask you to unmute your phone and identify yourself. If a number of people ask to speak, we'll ask you to be patient until it's your turn. I have two very important reminders to everyone participating. First, every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, you must be careful not to speak over one another so everyone who's listening can hear what is being said. And we have to have a clear record. For this reason, when it comes time for the board members to comment or ask questions about a particular gender item before any action is taken and then to vote on any agenda item. Our planner, Maureen Driscoll, will call the roll when necessary. As indicated on the agenda, public hearings will be heard on each application with applicants presenting their request and responding to the questions. After the public hearings have concluded, we will go into regular meeting, which remains open to the public for listening, but no testimony can be given in the board to deliberate amongst themselves. Also, this meeting is being recorded and posted on our town website. I'm going to ask Maureen to take attendance. Call your role. Thank you.
So this is what was the former, um, seven eleven years ago. It has had a number of ownership changes, which is why I feel like most of you have read that staff report several dozen times and not all of you, um, where, um, new ownership does require a new liquor permit and a new liquor permit requires a zoning signature, which therefore requires the ZDA to approve the location again. Their application is for an off premises beer, grocery beer, wine, liquor permit, which is consistent with the, um, previous permits, no changes to the operation as far as I understand. I believe the applicant has with him some photographs to show the inventory as previous applicants have done. He'll share them and then I'll keep them for the record on the, yeah, no other changes that I'm aware of or that they've represented to the town. And they've complied with the administrative requirements. I'm gonna try to bring up the address on today. On the screen to remind everyone where it is. Again, we know that it doesn't, um, that it meets the criteria. The liquor permit. In eleven B.
Feel like we just did this like yesterday.
There the last approval was, I believe, at the, in twenty twenty, end of twenty twenty or thereabouts. And is, um, so here's the location at the corner of Newton Street. Um, I did already preemptively, um, announced to the board that we did already discuss signage with regard to this, um, location because the ownership has had a history of using banners and some extra signs where they have not previously been allowed and on the side of the building.
Anybody have any questions?
I'll remind everyone that the, um, liquor control does monitor the site when someone applies for a grocery beer permit, they monitor the site for the criteria and have to submit the documentation that they meet the criteria for grocery so that it's not just become a beer store or something.
What are these supposed to represent? Just a beer store? Cause there's no beer, wine or anything?
Well, we're not allowed to sell, but the liquor also. So they submit, they submit the, the.
Is that all empty right now?
Yes, pretty much. We have our cage separating the liquor from the rest of the beverages.
Any questions? Being heard, uh, do we have any questions from the audience? Is here for or against? Angry motion, close the portion right here.
Motion to close public hearing of I C.
Second.
Motion made by Corey White side, second by Ryan Zolik. All in favor?
White side, aye.
This is the only guy.
Aye.
Methena, aye.
And Tubbs, aye. Not closed until, uh, either hearing. Thank you all. So we're bringing up the. Okay, next one. CBA twenty-two dash eleven, three oh one Berlin Turnpike, yeah, four dash four block one twenty-one, lot seven. Zachary Garino, on behalf of Connecticut Department of Transportation requesting a variance to allow the lot size of fifteen hundred, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven square feet when seventeen thousand two hundred and four is existing.
Zachary is a Connecticut DOT representative and he's, um, joining remotely.
Two acres are required, is required. In the BT one zone for Berlin zoning regulations, six J. In resulting in a lot width and bulk calculation adjustments for acquisition of land for signal upgrades at Deming Road intersection of the property for property owned by K Brothers LLC.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Can't see anybody, but.
Can you guys, uh, you, you, you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay. Wouldn't sure if there's delay. So my name is Zachary Garino. I'm from the Connecticut Department of Transportation, Division of Rights of Way. I'm here on behalf of K Brothers LLC. Like we stated, just to summarize, the department has a project to upgrade existing traffic signals along Route five and fifteen, the Berlin Turnpike. In connection with this project, the department identified that the existing right turn lane of Deming Road, Route one sixty, is encroaching onto the property of three oh one Berlin Turnpike. In order to correct this encroachment, the department is proposing to acquire one thousand two hundred forty-seven plus or minus square feet from the property. As a result of this proposed acquisition, the remaining property will not conform to the area requirements of the BT one zone. The lot size will become further non-conforming, reducing the existing seventeen thousand two hundred and four plus or minus square feet to fifteen thousand nine hundred fifty-seven plus or minus square feet in lieu of the required two acres. This acquisition will also affect a lot width from the existing hundred forty-five plus or minus feet to hundred twenty-nine plus or minus feet in lieu of the required one hundred and seventy-five feet. The reduction in lot size triggers Connecticut General Statute, section forty-eight twenty-four, where the condemning authority must obtain a zoning, zoning variance on behalf of the owner for the remainder of the property. Failure to obtain a variance may result in the total acquisition of the property. In conclusion, I'd like to request a lot size and lot width variance. And yeah, I have there on display, I submitted a marked up, uh, application depicting the acquisition of the fee taking, which also shows the other parts of the project, which are the easements. Uh, and I did an overlay of the as-built plan showing in relationship to where the building is and the lot lines. And on that exist, on the as-built plan, it even shows that encroachment. Um, so we're really here to correct what's existing. The roadway won't be changing. It's really the, the fee taking in this particular project will just be to cover the roadway. Nothing about the roadway will change. You won't be getting any closer than it already technically exists today. And the traffic project, the traffic part of this project is really focused there on the island, uh, where the sign is, which will remain. We're seeking an easement from the property owner unrelated to this variance. Uh, there's going to be pedestrian crossing. As you can see there, Reen's highlighting the crosswalk, the push button and the, the ramp. But that's unrelated to the variance. I'm focusing on the acquisition of the existing roadway. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any questions for the vote, uh, from the board?
Commissioner White side, uh, just curious, uh, when the right lane got put in, like how, how, how in arrears are we on this correction?
So this was identified by our district premise, uh, per, permit office back in like twenty twenty. So it's been around for a little while and I believe they waited because they knew project was coming. So this was kind of tacked on to this project. Wasn't initially a part of it, but we're already here doing an acquisition from the property owner. So it's the easiest time to incorporate it in. We're going to be doing evaluation to be being paid, um, for the property. So at least a two years, at least it's been identified. We've been working on trying to correct it.
Any words from staff?
So you may recall that when the store got rebuilt there a couple of years ago, there were some variances granted, um, for the setback. Um, the store was rebuilt and we could, the site was reconfigured to allow for the, um, just reorganization of the site, um, parking changes, et cetera. I'll pull that down again. So this as-built contrary to the GIS map I pulled up originally does show the existing building. Um, this encroachment by the, by the state into, um, the property, there's this jog in the property that comes out into that right hand turn lane. It's rather odd. The property line goes along Deming Road where you would expect it to be. And then it comes just out into the lane and goes along, um, in the middle of the lane until it hits the curve of the, um, onto the Berlin Turnpike. Um, was identified then. There was no taking proposed at the time, although I believe that turn lane had been there for many years before that. Um, I don't recall that turn lane not being there, but I've only been in town a snippet of time. Um, so this will correct the ownership from the practical standpoint, although it does create this reduction in lot size that then triggers all the other calculations of the bulk table to be adjusted as well.
That's correct.
The variance or the setback will not be, um, changed because the, the variance was for eighteen-ish feet. I'm, I don't want to misstate the exact size.
It was eighteen.
And it won't be any less than that because if you look at the, where the jog is, this dimension from the side of the building, the dimension at this end won't be any less than that. So the setback remains valid for the variance that was previously granted for the property when they rebuilt it.
Yeah, the variance that was granted was for eighteen feet and the closest spot in the building that was on the as-built, that's kind of hard to read on that particular map, uh, is nineteen point nine feet. So we're not going, we're not reducing it lower than that. Really, it's just the, the lot size and then the lot width.
And to the best, um, my understanding is that the state will continue to allow to the best of their ability, um, planting and screening or otherwise the criteria of the, um, site plan as they can while still providing the improvements that are needed for the site.
Yeah, in the area along Deming Road where all those, uh, plantings are, what's shown on the map, we're going to be covering that with an easement for highway purposes, uh, basically to cover all of the roadway signs that are also currently encroaching on the property, like the turn lane and the root signs. Those are all placed inside of that same plantings area. So that particular easement is really just to cover the signs, but we would like to own the roadway and fee. So we're comfortable with those signs and along Deming Road being in an easement, which also encompasses those plantings, which we have no intention of removing. It's really just to cover our signs and then the fee taking is for the roadway. So we can own that.
I also believe this Maureen speaking again, that the, um, planting plan was modified after the as-built was, um, provided to the town when the building was rebuilt, um, because of survival along the edge of the road. So they did go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and get a modification for the plantings along there. So it's not exactly as shown any longer. We did not require a new as-built for plants. But the landscape plan was modified.
I have no questions. Everything was to be in order, just to try and do and make sense what they're trying to do. Does anybody on the board have anything to comment or question?
Motion to close public hearing on I D.
Motion made by Corey White side, is it a second?
Second by someone.
Second by Ryan Zolik. All in favor?
White side, aye.
No, aye.
Tubbs, aye.
Methena, aye.
Aye.
Okay, see if we got it.
Those are ayes.
Thank you.
Yes, so science. Okay, going back. CBA twenty-two dash nine, dash oh nine, two sixty-six Lower Lane, map fifteen dash two, block ninety-one, lot seventy. Joseph Renello, Renello is appealing per zoning regulations fifteen eighty-one, the determination of the town, players on planning and zoning enforcement officer, required, oh man, regarding the number of dwelling units permitted at the existing house in our eleven zone. Speaking for the, uh, for the appeal.
Uh, Mr. Chairman Attorney John Harvey, representing the, uh, we're here today. It's, uh, Mr. Randy Yellow, Frank Giuliani, who are the principals of two sixty-six Lower Lane LLC. Uh, several of the exhibits, uh, that I have, I committed possession of the last few days. I filed nothing electronically. So I've got paper to give to the commission if that's okay. And then we'll.
It's fine. We just own it after you.
That's all right. And the other question I had from Maureen is, um, when I filed, you feel that the commissioner was going to copy, is he feel any attachment?
Yeah, that, that was distributed. The, the package you got emailed to you included it as well. This should be, it's this. Well, we, we include that with everything and then your argument. Yep, your grounds reversing. And the letters. So all that included. And then a copy of, uh, opinion, my opinion. Yeah.
Anyways, uh, was, was, you know, not to be tedious here, but in a nutshell, uh, to sort of get to the end of the beginning here, uh, before we go through the details, this, this whole matter is controlled by the Connecticut General Statute eight dash two, which if you look at the grounds for appeal, uh, submitted to you, you'll see that that statute of providing regulations, meaning the town regulations shall not provide for termination of any, I put unconforming, it's non-conforming, used solely as a result of non-use for a specific period of time without regard to the intent of the property owner to maintain that use. Such regulations shall not terminate, redeem, abandon, and not conform with the property on such use. Building or structure voluntarily discontinues such use, building or structure, and such discontinuance is accompanied by an intent not to reestablish such use, building or structure. And you can read the rest of the argument here. What this, I made one other typo, my mistake. On the next page of, of the, uh, summary for grounds, at the very end, it says, as a consequence, the position of the planner slash zoning enforcement officer must be reversed. So that statute overlays this whole matter. And I, and what had happened here, um, nineteen ninety-eight, I believe, the then owners applied for a subdivision approval for the planning and zoning commission. That subdivision, uh, which was actually approved, cut off a conforming lot in the existing lot where this structure is located, uh, remained, but it complied with the zoning relative to, uh, multifamilies at that time. What had happened is the surveyor, Mr. Hugh, uh, Rod Hewer, engineer, Mr. Rod Hewer, I believe it is, uh, prepared the drawing and attended the hearing. And on that drawing, which I think Maureen has referenced more than once, it indicated that the existing building was a two-family. I assume that that's in the record somewhere. We will come to that. And then Attorney Pintor represented, um, the applicants, this Mary Saroyes and Gary Saroyes. Now, I did get a letter from Attorney Pintor. There was the error, if I can find it. I'll, I'll find it. I'll give you the number of it. He does not, um, his file's been destroyed. He had no rec, no recollection of what occurred at the hearing. And of course, I think he alluded to the fact that the engineer passed away. Um, and the minutes of that meeting are attached, uh, to what Maureen has submitted. I'll come to that in a minute. And, um, those indicate that it was a relatively quick hearing and that they approved it with two conditions, that a bond be posted and, um, give me a second here, bond be posted. These are, these minutes can be found in, uh, Maureen's, um, in the, bond be posted and a waiver of requirement to that, you know, the space, there's only one new lot was created. Those are, I'll, I'll reference that when I go through Maureen's submission to you. I think it's important to note that the only people to speak at that meeting were Attorney Pintor and the engineer. And as important is, or most important is there is no criteria, no requirement that the prior three family, as Maureen characterizes it, now has to be a two-family going forward as a condition of this approval. And the reason is that that's beyond any subdivision approval I've ever run into. They had no authority for that. And unfortunately, we don't know what happened. And if you look at my appeal in the letter, I'm going to go over in a minute, you'll see that the zoning regulations at that time, anytime a lot, anybody wanted zoning, I'm sorry, the subdivision approvals, they had the meeting with staff, preliminary plan, final plan, second review, comments, et cetera, et cetera. That file apparently does not exist. And, and the only reason I, I bring that up is there's no way to know what the discussions were with staff as to referencing the building as a three-family, as to why the engineer listed it as a two-family. My own opinion is because two families, uh, were allowed at that time and there was zoning criteria with two families as to side yards, what have you, that, and as you look at the map, again, we can reference Maureen's, um, admission, you'll see that he, there's a zoning cable and it complied with that. The fact that it was a three-family, that was actually irrelevant. And the reason I say that is there's evidence that, we'll come to it in a minute, that this property was built, I thought it was nineteen forty, but the exhibit I got today, it was nineteen forty-two. The regulations, the zoning regulations didn't go into effect until nineteen forty-four. So clearly, whatever was there was a non-conforming use. The, the most, the most distant, I'll, I'll hand that out in a minute, the most distant assessor card that we can find is from nineteen fifty-six. That shows construction in nineteen forty-two as a three-family. And Mr. Uh, Frank Giuliani will testify as to the actual construction of the house. And it's, I, I guess I'm jumping a gun here, but it explains to you that in his experience, the way it's constructed, it's, it's just not conceivable that it wasn't initially constructed as a three-family. Now initially, I didn't think that that was an issue in this case. We all thought it was a three-family, but somehow because the engineer drew two-family on the drawing, that was evidence that the owners were waiving their right to a three-family, uh, voluntarily abandoned. That, I think, lies in the face of what this record's going to show in the, in the language of eight dash two, which I just read, meaning, uh, you need to ascertain their intent. How do we find out what the owner's intent was at that time? Or what was their conduct? What happened after this was approved? It was, remains to this day, it's three-family. Taxes a three-family, leased to three different tenants. Um, I'm going to provide a letter to the fire marshal showing it was brought up the code as a three-family. And I, I just don't think that there's any proof, other proof or evidence other than a one draw from, uh, the late nineties that shows, uh, this structure designated as a two-family. Now, that having been said, and Maureen will bore details, however, we'll, I'm trying to get through this as fast as I can. The task of my appeal was a letter I'd really, I had initially sent to the town attorney, I think John Hurst here tonight. And I think that is in the package you had, and that may contain the some redundancy what I've already talked about. I would point out in that letter that I sent to, uh, Jennifer and, uh, Mr. Doffrey, uh, that if they wanted to see the building, will make arrangements to satisfy themselves that it is a three-family. And of course, uh, of no small importance is on the third floor is a claw tub, which I don't think anybody's putting that in in the last thirty or forty years. And of course, you'll hear from Frank that, uh, all three units is in aggressive, secret stairs, heating, uh, water supply, et cetera. It was one issue here in the Maureen raised, only one water line, what we pay for the water. So I don't see that that has any relevance. I did cite eight dash two again, but only in part. They'd have to look at the initial appeal to, uh, get the whole gist of it. And I've cited a case, okay? We don't have to do with that. That's really not. Get some sunscreen. Anyways, uh, it's a vested property, right? You just can't say, oh, I, I, in my opinion, you can't say, oh, here's a map, you must have waved it goodbye. You have to look at their intention. I went over the requirements. Let me see here on this letter. This was my letter of April twenty-ninth to the town attorney, town attorney. I think, um, and the assessor cards come into issue here, which I think the brokers in the past and even currently relied upon in advertising this property as a three-family. Now, what prompted all of this? Well, my clients decided they're going to sell the property. And they listed it as a three-family, presumably after they had discussed it with the broker, she had seen the house, had seen the assessor's card. Well, we had, we had a buyer, the bank, uh, in their due diligence, wanted, I guess, it was only compliance letter, wanted something confirmed was a three-family. And that was denied by, uh, the planning slash zoning enforcement officer, essentially in reliance, in my opinion, upon the map or the drawing, it was a map prepared for the subdivisions in nineteen ninety-eight, what, twenty-three years ago. So that, that deal held apart and we found that, uh, we found someone else. They found the second buyer. And that deal also held apart for exactly the same reason. And the difference in value between a three-family and two-family is approximately forty to fifty thousand dollars. So we just can't say, okay, well, we'll advertise it to a family because we think we have a valid, non-conforming, three-family, uh, and we're asking this commission, uh, put all the facts and reverse the opinion of the, um, of the planner and zoning enforcement officer. Now, that having been said, a couple of other things I would like to submit to you, necessarily in the order I had planned, but we'll, we'll get through this. Uh, the, I don't, you want to do a number of these, Maureen?
I'm sorry?
Would you remember these exhibits or?
I will. That's.
So the first item is a picture of the claw tub on the third floor. Uh, again, the house is available. If you want to walk around and look at it, it's not a problem for us. I've got a couple, I guess I've got four pictures of the claw tub on the third floor, which is Mr. Randy. Next.
Yeah, just, just, you can even stack them next to you, just in order, make them the next thing that reaches or whatever. And then I'll grab them. Thank you.
Uh, next is an inspection for my, for the Giuliani's when they bought the property, I think it was two thousand and seven. And the point of it is, if you look through page two, you'll see it's listed as a three-family. He goes over the, what's available on the various floors, um, et cetera, the bathrooms and what have you. Now, this was in two thousand and seven, so that's after these subdivision, but before we ran into this issue. I think it's, uh, relevant to this case. I'll give you, uh, more copies, three copies. There, I have four. There, I have four. I didn't highlight the references, but you can see them, the top of page two, the three-family. Here's the discussion of the composite servicing, the kitchens, utilities, what happens. Okay, and I think if you look at the front page, you'll see that it's, looked like a house was added onto the, but that's what was there when they bought it. I would say that that was there in 1942 when it was built. Now, of additional interest, a couple of other things. The, this, this will be more appropriate. The actual application itself was filed in August of 1998 by Mary and David Seroyes. I have a copy of that application. And. In the hearing, it was held in September, so that's just to confirm who the owners were at that time, I'll give you. I forgot the three copies, it's okay. You can see it's Mr. Hewitt as the engineer.
One of them will have to stay as the received copy.
Yeah, I'll let you have this one.
I got another one.
Oh, thank you. I'm numbering them on a list, because I don't, I'm not having them each.
What is this indicating to us? This is the actual application from 1998, I believe it was, that requested the subdivision approval. Then was eventually approved, and then within the next sixty days by planning. Yeah, concept, I mean, what did the mouse do, they wanna cut out a conforming lot? Not much to do with what we're, okay. I'm sorry. I said, I don't think it says too much to do with what we're actually looking at. Well, just trying to lay the foundation for what, what occurred, that's all. Okay, continue, please. Sure. Seroyes purchased the property in 1997, and the application followed in 1998. I've got a copy of the deed to them. It was dated July 23rd, the owners were Barry and David Seroyes, which are also the applicants in the subdivision application I just submitted. And the reason it's relevant is because that map, and that subdivision application, is what the town is hanging their hat on to this. That, that's why it's relevant, in my view, anyways. More paper.
But this doesn't include the map?
No, well, I get, I get that, actually, so that's, I give you copies of the, the deed to the Seroyes's.
Sorry, I have that back, that's the deed, I have the deed.
Yeah, it's come through in different pieces, so it's confusing here. Two pages, dear.
It should be page 395, volume, volume 395, page 462 and 395, 463.
Yes, you can. Next, I did, David Seroyes was the brother-in-law of Mary Seroyes, how do I know that? I reached out to David Seroyes, I think he lives in town, he's a teacher. And I asked him, where was he living at that time? He said, I lived on the third floor. So when I did patient, he gave me, he sent me a text yesterday, I was able to print it this morning. And that's that exhibit, and if you will read, read, read this, it says, hi, David Seroyes lived on third floor of 266 Lower Lane from approximately 1998 to 2001, the third floor had a porcelain tub, gas stove, and a direct heating antenna. What's the purpose of this? This is, this, this is the applicant of the subdivision approval. This shows, if nothing else, the intent that after that approval, notwithstanding the two-family designation on that map, the owner continues to be a three-family. And I want to remind you that that's exactly what eight dash two of the Connecticut general statutes calls for. I hear that, Maureen, I think I gave you a bunch of, yeah. What was the owner's intent? It's a three-family, we're gonna keep going as a three-family. All right, I'm not. Now we're on the deeds here. I don't think, this is an exhibit, but the Seroyes has sold the property in 2000. That would be in line for 36 at page 001. You're gonna keep the record, I'll go away with that.
I'm sorry, that's a 2001 sale?
Uh, hang on, it might be 2000, yeah. They sold it to Mr. Shadow, C H A T O. My client's book title, 2009. 2007, seven, from Mr. Shadow, and continued on to today. Now. There are several assessor cards in Maureen's, which I won't go over, but one of the most telling, in my opinion. Part 1955, 1956. Highlighted in yellow, to the doctor, Maureen. I don't believe that's the, here it is. If you look at the highlighted items, you'll see that deals at the property, Casimir, Gonsar owned it. Look down the middle, talks about three-family, the type, it was inspected at that time. That was in May, it looks like, May of 1955. Puts the age in 19, you go back to the middle, thirteen rooms, age, age 1942, we thought it was 1940, okay, maybe it was 1942. But this confirms, vis a vis the town records, it was a three-family at that time. Yeah, this should go here for my clients, and you'll, and Mr. Seroyes's text. From all the evidence I see, it continued to be a three-family. Now, that document was sent to me by a person who worked at the assessor's office today. Called 1956 card, but it didn't indicate inspection in 1955. Now. Says my clients have owned it. They were contacted by the fire marshal. And there's a letter from the fire marshal and various items that were listed attached to the letter indicating that they were in compliance with the requirements of the the building code for a three-family. Now, and like I said, as an exhibit, the cover letter says November 22nd, 2010. This was sent to me by the fire marshal last week. What's the point of it? It just evidences the continued intention of the owners to maintain it as a three-family. So, there's no secrets here. Open these all from the sky, there's also, I gotta go back, this is a letter from Attorney Pintor confirming that he destroyed the file and had no recollection of the actual hearings. As well, we'll come to the minutes, we can talk about those. The latest assessor's card, print date is 33122. And that card shows, highlighted in yellow, changed to two-family per zoning. And that's, what, what, we talked about, we had a sale, the bank went there, the town, the zoning enforcement officer slash owner of the plan took the position that it was only a two-family. So that having been said, I'll give you a copy of the card. And you can look at the, the back of the card confirms your bill, 1940, maybe the 1940. No, is it not stable? I'm sorry about that.
What year is that card?
This was the most recent card, 331, 2022.
I got three. I have the original, front and back.
Okay, that must be, there's two pages.
The front and back of the card is what you should have.
Just for the record, this is Attorney Capola, while the board takes a moment to look at what's been passed off. I just wanna know for the two board members that are participating remotely, I am scanning these documents and I will be putting them into your via email, so you will receive them shortly, we're just in the process of scanning them, thank you.
Well, more, so I wrote a letter to Maureen, she was kind enough to respond. And on the, on the exhibit, she missed it, she, there was a mistake in the date of the letter, but that, that, she fixed that, that's like exhibit 21 that you, you can look at. In her documents, which I think you have.
They were in the package as well, that was distributed, that letter?
Yeah.
It's in the package you submitted.
Uh, I don't think, is it in the package I submitted to?
Yeah, all right, it's in the package that was distributed prior to the meeting. The letter is dated February 7th, 2022, but it was actually written in May, I used a template, I failed to change the date. Sorry, everyone.
Very last exhibit in her submission, I think it's exhibit 21. If we look at that, I'd like to comment on it briefly. She gives an accurate history of the whole thing, I'm not, there's no argument about that. And she confirms the 56 assessor card. We've already put in an exhibit listed as a three-family, that it was built in 1940, it may have been 42. And she goes on to reference the map, we'll come to that in a second. And their legal position, as I understand it, some of the clarification is that the property owner expressed intent to abandon the three-family use with their subdivision application to the town planning commission, to label the existing house as a two-family. Which is another of this whole thing, how, if you want, I'm assuming you, I'll give you a copy of it anyways, just to, sure you've got it. And it's a two-page letter. The. I mean, you don't have a highlight, you'll, you'll see, it's the middle of the first page, we talked about it, and then the second page about her position as to it being abandoned, as evidenced by their intention where the engineer drew two-family on the.
Does it even be handed out as well?
No. With my notes for a second.
It's in this back, it's in this back.
I'd also point out, before I go over Maureen's submission, that there has never been any enforcement action by the town. In other words, their position is, 1998, this became a two-family. Nobody, nobody did anything about it, it was never a cease and desist order, it was taxed and things ruled along, as it had in the past. Clearly, the intention of the owners was it was, and will continue to be a three-family. And this property, in my humble opinion, well-protected by the clay and unambiguous languages, eight dash two, the Connecticut general statutes, not by some implication, now.
Yes. When you say that page should be, May of 2023, May, I wanna say the 24th. Mistyped, yeah, so in, in the package of file contents you got today, the copy you have has handwritten, crossed out, and says mistyped, should be May 26th, 2022. And in parentheses, discussed with Attorney Harvey, because we discussed it as soon as I thought, I was like mailed and then found it, like, whoops. I'm sorry if that creates any confusion. I believe it's item number 20 in that package. They're mostly listed, the exhibit numbers are mostly in the upper right-hand corner. Clerk did it, she found vacant spaces to put the exhibit number. Clerk did it. She found vacant spaces to put the exhibit number.
Attorney John Harvey again. If you do read the inspection report from 2007, let's talk about no heat on the third floor. What they meant was I guess our gas stove that provided the heat or something like that, but that night wasn't working. There wasn't, there was heat available there. And I'll try and comment quickly on Maureen's exhibits. Well, the map is exactly, is exhibit one.
No, the map is also been distributed. But I will share it because that's the easiest thing to do. This is, this is the filed map number 3041. My exhibits also reference map 3069, I believe.
Oh, I think there's comments on the side that was in the signature. Can we get to those comments?
Oh, no, that's the one in the file. I pulled this off. I just pulled this out of the land records just now to share. Hold on, I'll find the file to share. Give me a minute. Have to get rid of the Zoom screen in order to get back to the file. I had it ready for the meeting. Hold on one minute. Hand it off for me too. Our clerk scanned the file for me and I'm not finding where it got put. Yes. Basically, this package scanned. So if it is in this package as number one. With the notes on the left hand side of the screen of the, of the map. Yep.
Exhibit one is what you're looking for?
Yeah, so it's the map and has the notes from 2018 in the, on the far right, left rather. Far left. That's the zoning file that was created in 2018.
The first thing I want to point out is there was a zoning table that shows that both lots comply with one and two family zone. Now, you can see that it designated two family. And of course, our position is it was a three family or is it three family? You can say, well, why, why would we care about the two family zoning table? The reason is that's all the town had that they had to comply with. There was no zoning regulations for three families. If there were, they would have had to comply because zoning has to move towards conformity. If you conform, you're going to carve out a lot. That to me is why the engineer put that on there. I have no idea what the facts are. We have no staff notes. We have nothing. We're just, I'm just guessing as I suppose. It's important to look at the notes. I'm not sure who put these on, but if you read them. You know, further down could not be determined that existing three family was abandoned for two family use. This is town record, whatever it is. I mean, it's something to do with, important in this case, no zoning confirmation if I could see. When owners meter, they talk about meters, we'll give you this group on the electric meters. At the top. No, okay, I think Maureen confirmed this too. There is a tape. I think Maureen listened to it. There was no discussion about anything on the tape about the existing two family. Again. It's important if you're going to take a three family, turn into a two family and not have it as a condition of approval, but
Do we have the rest of the 98 application or is it just on one page?
I, I believe that's what was found. I'm I didn't realize we found that or didn't recall that we found that. I, I didn't recall finding that file, so I'm remiss in not knowing what the rest of that file has in it.
Attorney Harvey, do you have, what's the 98?
There is no file. That's the only thing we have. There must be staff comments. I haven't seen more. It looked at your zoning regulations. And I've quoted that in my letter. Field study, staff, not supposed to police department say, nothing. Exhibit three was, I'm not going to go over the wall.
Sorry, one more question.
I'm sorry.
You mentioned there was no three family zoning in 98. Is that true?
Yeah, yes. And I'll go through the, I'll do a summary as well.
Exhibit three, which is an assessor's card. Print date 2018. You've had that, I think, Maureen. You're in exhibit three.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And the very bottom, three family. There's a note, 1966 card, one family, two conversions. I don't know what that means.
Just wait one second because we have a couple of people that are participating remotely. We got to make sure. So did they have this scan to them?
I can't find it. She scanned that today. I can't find it. I can't find that scan. She scanned it and put it in the meeting file. No, today. This, this, this was finished today. I wonder if, because she sometimes emails it to, it to ourselves and I don't think it probably got through our filter to email into the, into the file. I'm thinking the clerk didn't know that you had to email it internally instead of through email. I mean, had to scan it. Again, the application packet that was the only thing listed.
How long have the current owners of the property?
You know, you're going to continue.
Some of this we've done, and you don't want to hear about it. We've already been listed.
I, I, they, but they need to see.
Did they get that package already?
They don't have that. Because it, I think because it's got so, it's got such a significant number. It's got handwritten notes. It's got various maps. That's probably why you're not seeing it. Is it probably did not go through as one document. So it needs to be divided up. You're going to have to split it up and it's going to have to be something like. So maybe, I think you need about 15 minutes to do that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, hopefully less, but I will. First, I have to find the keys in my office.
Deferring for all presidents. Based on the nation.
I'm, I'm kind of looking at there's a lot of information that's not out there. There are other immediate four votes in this to pass and this, this this information that we have in these packets and all the information that we've been inundated with in the last few minutes, hour and a half, actually. There's a lot of, just looking at it quickly, there's a lot of stuff in, in, even the assessors cards, some years that building was a four, four family house. So there's a lot of information that our people on Zoom don't have, aren't privy to right now. You saw the packet that he's been sending us.
So.
If you can get them that information and give them time to go look it over. I think even sending it now and having them try to look it over, by the time they get it all, if they're even able to get it all now.
They're looking at an electronic copy, which, which I mean, that's sort of the other issue as well is, you know, they, they are getting not a physical copy. And, and some of the notations and whatnot are very, very small.
No, if you want to do this again, but if you want to continue it so we can have all the papers and all that, then so be it. Okay, I guess maybe, this is no exhibits. This would just be a witness. He would be quick. But I have no problem with that. And then I can finish up and then Maureen can have her say, but I, I kind of agree that I think everybody.
Go ahead.
I was, my thoughts is I would like to present the the defense of the determination so that everyone had that information as well. And you can absorb that all together with the evidence presented by the applicant and and then if you feel best to distribute this in paper form to on the rest of the members and to use your term chew on it for a little bit of time to, to absorb all the information in it. I think that would be reasonable to another meeting.
My issue with this is, you know, we have, we have to make a decision on this. Yes or no, whether we're going to uphold. Now, if we determine that goes against or goes for them, if we change your decision on the property. Are they going to, you know, or are we, if we uphold your decision now because of what's going on here with the information, are they going to be able to come back and cause more legal issues and having to defend it in court or anything like that if we make a decision?
Well, it's, it's, it's maester, it's their legal right to appeal.
I understand that.
Decision if it's not handled up. But I, I think what you're concerned about is the fact that you have two members participating.
They don't have the information we all have.
And I agree with you. And I think that the one, and, and I understand that Ms. Juicy, you know, I, I want to make this very clear. Corporation Council's office is counsel to the board. And in this scenario where there's an appeal, I have nothing to do with the rendering of the decision for that reason. And so I'm advising you as your counsel. I am not counsel to Ms. Juicy. And Ms. Juicy has always offered to have, in these circumstances, to have her own counsel if she so chooses. But if, if what's going to continue to go on is referencing to documents that those members that are participating remotely do not have in front of them, then I think the hearing needs to be suspended because again, they're not looking at what you have in front of you. And they're at a disadvantage because it's, 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 it's not what the public hearing is meant to be. It's not fair to either the appellate or the CEO. So, yeah, I would say suspend it.
That being said. I think if we're going to stop, we should stop. Here. What are your thoughts?
I had a thought, this white side perhaps, that that we have some summary comments for the record tonight from the CEO on the decision and some of the there's some background on her response letter from May 26th. Because I agree with the statement that we've had one side partially presented, mostly presented. And I would like to leave this meeting with some idea of the town's position.
Well, I understand that. So.
Mr. Harvey wants to be heard.
I apologize to Attorney Harvey. I mean, I think we're entitled to finish our case and then they can make their pitch, but to chop this up is, I mean, bad enough we have to continue it. Okay, I want everybody to see the whole file. There's no secrets here. And actually, I think Maureen's letter, which is already an exhibit, is speaks her intent probably to be amplified, but I would say if you're going to continue it, then let's suspend it now and get this stuff to the other members and then we'll finish this off whenever we can.
Can you just say two different things? Just now I'm confused.
No, he's, he's indicating, he's asking that you not hear from Ms. Juisty because he's not done with his presentation.
Okay, I would hear his first.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't allow him to, to complete. And, you know, and I, I agree with that. If we're going to suspend, we should suspend because as the appellate, they carry the burden. And it really, the floor is his at this point.
You'd like to continue? Please continue.
So I, I thought we were going to continue the hearing, suspend the hearing. Now we're going to keep going.
Well, again.
All the exhibits I'm referencing now, you folks don't have.
I agree, but they don't.
So, so I believe that Attorney Harvey is saying that he thinks it's best because again, your two remote board members are not present. They don't have a copy. He'd like to suspend.
Okay. I'd like to introduce a motion to the board to suspend this meeting. Come up with, Maureen, we have to come up with a continuous statement, whether it be a special meeting.
This is the first, this is the first day that it's open. So you have 35 days. So it can be the next meeting?
So, so the July meeting.
But what does that do?
I'm looking, wait a minute, my things first, I go one, two, three, four, the 26th of July. Yep.
Yes.
Yes, it is. I'm sorry.
So just one additional housekeeping matter though, before we suspend two and before they vote. Attorney Harvey, do you have any other exhibits for them tonight that you want them to attend to? Because we should probably get those marked so we don't have any similar issue next time if there's anybody participating remotely.
This is Mr. Julian. I think we're going to suspend the meeting. We're going to suspend it now.
So there would, there are potentially other exhibits.
So, so can, can we just ask though that, that you get those in advance of the next meeting? So we don't run into this issue.
No problem. We'll get them to Maureen and then whatever happens, you guys will think about, okay?
I'll make a motion to postpone.
Motion made by Commissioner Zelik, second by Commissioner Whitehead. Just a roll call on this from Maureen.
Lenny Tubbs?
Yes.
Christine Mizada?
Aye.
Corey Whitehead? Ryan Zellig?
Aye.
Hunter Mathina?
Aye.
Okay, that being said, all in favor, we already did it. We're all set then. So this is suspended. Continue it on the July 26th.
Yes.
I got to find my. Okay.
I'm good.
Regular meeting.
We're freezing off.
Thank you. GBA 22, 2022 dash eight, 109 Rowan Turnpike. Five dash three, block 21, block PJ. Timothy Sullivan Esquire, behalf of the Lynn's Beverage LLC requesting sales of alcoholic beverages located at, for package store liquor permit per zoning regulations. 11D at property owned by AGM Home 3 LLC. In the BT1 zone. You get a motion to accept this application.
Whitehead.
Motion to approve.
Whitehead, motion to approve location.
Zelik will second.
Motion by Commissioner Whitehead, second by Commissioner Zelik. All in favor? Maureen, any? Any comments or discussion?
Mizada, aye?
No, we, comments and discussion right now, Christine, if anybody has any. Nothing being heard.
Roll.
Yours.
Tubbs?
Aye.
Mizada?
Aye.
Whitehead?
Aye.
Sorry, Zellig?
Aye.
And Mathina?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Approval for that lot liquor store permit, location. Okay, next on the agenda is EBA 22 dash nine. Four lane, that's 15, block 91, lot 70.
You don't have to read it all. You can just continue.
A motion to suspend the meeting at this time and here on the next regular meeting on July 26th.
You don't have to do that. It's just continued.
Next on the agenda, ZBA 22 dash 10, 164, Britton Road, map 3 dash 3. Block 24A, lot 38. Erica Algores is requesting a sale of alcoholic beverages, location approval for zoning regulations 11B for grocery beer liquor permit for Happy Mark at property owned by Pancha Kumar in a CCD1 zone. Five second. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Zelik and second by Commissioner Whitehead. Any discussion? None being heard. You get a motion. Roll call, please.
Chairman Tubbs?
Aye.
Commissioner Mizada?
Aye.
Mr. Whitehead?
Aye.
Mrs. Zelik?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathina?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, ZBA 22, 2022 dash 11, 301 Rowan Turnpike, map 4 dash 4, block 121, lot 7. Zachary Marino, behalf of Connecticut Department of Transportation, requesting a variance for a lot lot size of 15,947 square feet when 17,204 is existing in two acres is required in the BT1 zone for, per zoning regulation 6J. And resulting in a lot with a bulk calculation adjustments for accusation of land for signal upgrade at Deming Road intersection, property is owned by K Brothers LLC. Can I get a motion to accept?
Motion to approve this.
Approve this very much.
DOT, Whitehead.
Second by Commissioner Zelik.
Motion to accept by Commissioner Whitehead, second by Commissioner Zelik. Any discussion?
I have to say that this one really confused me looking at the detail, but it was wide away with, you know, an easy presentation. But I was kind of surprised that, well, there, there's nobody here to speak. The owners aren't here to speak against it, so they've obviously pre-approved the acquisition. They're not going to convert. In fact, they get saved by this application.
You roll call, Maureen.
I'm sorry. Chairman Tubbs?
Aye.
Commissioner Mizada?
Aye.
Mr. Whitehead?
Aye.
Mr. Zellig?
Aye.
Mr. Mathina?
Aye.
Motion passes. You can do their lengths and changes on the Rowan Turnpike. Sorry. What else we have here, Maureen?
So you have.
Very in paperwork, so I don't know where.
Several sets of minutes. You've had not a lot of meetings and haven't had. You can do, I believe you can do all of them, I think.
Regular meeting minutes, November 30th, 2021. We get a motion to approve.
Move by time.
Second by Zelik.
Motion by Whitehead, second by Ryan Zellig. Any discussion, any changes? Hunter, Christine, you can unmute now and just, let's get this done.
Acknowledge.
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay.
No discussion.
No discussion, okay. All in favor? Motion passes. Regular season minutes, February 22nd, 2022. Motion, Whitehead? This was that other one here.
You can second.
Yeah, motion, second by Commissioner Tubbs. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You're muted if you're trying to go.
Hunter, Christine?
Aye.
Hunter was seated though.
I was absent that day.
Yeah, you're all set then. I didn't see. Next one, regular meeting. May 24th, 2022. You get a motion to accept these minutes. Seconded by Tubbs, Commissioner Tubbs. Any, any changes, any? All in favor? Aye.
Mathina, aye.
Mizada, aye.
Leave that, thanks for the minutes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Motion will be second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mizada, aye.
The time is 9:06 PM.
Hunter and Christine, we're going to need you guys next month, at least for this part of the continued part of the agenda. So please try to make yourselves available.
Okay, can it, okay, thank you. Will do.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you.